Good afternoon.
We're seeing it by this way.
Well, how are you?
Doing well, doing well.
Righty.
So, I see you're going.
Okay, the Administrative Conference of August 22nd, now called OR. The invocation will be done by the Chair and the pledge will be by Councilman Corbin, please. Better stand.
First of all, that we come again, Lord, thanking you for this day and for an opportunity to come back to this meeting to transact the business of the city. As we come, Lord, we ask your blessings upon this meeting. Ask you blessings upon the mayor and of all the council members. Given in some strange times, we have tragedies everywhere, so we ask your blessings upon those our neighbors to the south of us, Lord, who have overcome by the floods, by the disasters. So, we ask, Lord, that you strengthen them, give them encouragement and determination in this time of crisis. Thank you for those who take care of the governance of the city. Lord, give us the wisdom to be fair and to conduct ourselves orderly. In your name it we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There, can it? I'm collecting my calls, Lord.
President.
President.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Burd.
Present.
Mr. Bowman.
Thank you. Okay, tomorrow we'll be intending motion to stop our meeting, our previous meetings, including our special meeting on the night as well as our Administrative Conference on the 8th and our regular meeting on the night. This time, we will have wise recognition of guests, communications, or council members, or any council members who have any communication. Let me, let me give a few remarks in regards to my communications, and I will reserve a couple more at the end of the meeting. As you are all aware, we had another shooting, killing in District A. It makes District A unproportionately the shooting capital of the city. Initially, I was restraining myself to say it's more related to relationships, but now I'm wondering if there's something we can't do in the policing field, Mayor, in the chief. I mean, I'm hearing through a lot of other avenues that a lot of, a lot of things are happening at night, and I'm just wondering if, if, if there's a, how do you view it? How do this police chief view this continual spike in, in violent, violent crime? Do you have any?
Yes, sir. Let me just make a couple comments, and then we can certainly have our chief or our deputy chief to come up and, I don't know if y'all recall when we did the community engagement call to action back about three months, three or four months ago? We had said that we would continue those efforts. In that light, we were planning to do kind of a seminar with the community on violence and crime, September 24th. I've not made the formal announcement yet, and I'm still meeting with.
What's that date again?
September 24th on a Saturday, but I've not done a formal announcement yet because we're still planning, and we want to make sure that we're, we're going to be able to keep that date, and so I've not made a formal announcement yet, but I am in the, in the process of, of working with different community groups, and we want them to be in on the planning. And so, we plan to, the Police Department has been asked to provide a list of all the different groups that are doing things around the city to try to minimize some of the violence, and we're going to be calling those folks, the leaders to the table, to help us with planning the seminar, and we're calling it a community engagement seminar on violence and crime. We've had some calls from different groups, and this time, we're going to go in more detail with breakout sessions. We'll call in people to actually see how they can better engage with our community-oriented policing bureau to help us try to minimize. And I want, I want to say this, yes, there is a spike. It's a spike nationally, it's a spike in our community in, in both areas. In fact, our neighbor's homicide rate has already passed what they had last year, but, but it's a national trend, and, and we've seen it. Of course, that doesn't, we don't take it lightly that we're continuing to have these efforts, and if you'll look at the homicides, when you look at the data, when you look at the facts, most of them are still relationship-based. Somebody has gotten into a fight with somebody, and they come back to retaliate or whatever. So, there is a deeper problem, and we're hoping that we can have more strategies by getting people from the community to actually come to the table and let us have those conversations, and let's come back with a plan of action and move on the plan. But it's not a police problem, it's a community problem. It's everybody's problem, and until we all take ownership, we're going to continue to have people making those bad decisions. These are decisions that people make, and police don't know where they're going to happen and when they're going to happen. But it appears that the decisions are being based on who's connected to who, and when you, when you, when you really look at the facts, that's what's happening in Streetport. Now, I can't attest to that across the nation, but we're going to make, continue to make those efforts, but we want to have this one big thing and try to get all the different groups that are doing something to see if we can come together under one tent and have breakout sessions and actually get, dive deeper into this issue and see how we can come out with some strategies that we can execute to see if we can minimize some of it. We're going to, we're asking everybody to, to, you know, really buy into it and take ownership.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and, and again, I'm not, I'm not attracted in thinking that it's, it's a policing issue by itself.
Mm-hmm.
I realize that it's, it goes beyond just policing. We said it before that it's a, it's a lot of issues that, that has evolved into this. But my, my question was, initially was that, and I understand the strategies and, and working through community groups, but I'm wondering, will the approach this time be where we will actually try to get those, the perception of those that can actually, that is actually on the ground that could help us? You know, we got.
Yes.
A combination of people that necessarily, we was talking to, I thought the wrong people in some instances, but can we approach it that we're going to appeal to and attract people who are actually on the ground with some of this?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, you, you feel that patrolling, increased patrolling would not, would not be a, a viable approach at this time?
I, I think that along with a lot of other things. I mean, if we had, you know, if we had a police officer for every house, we can't stop it if somebody inside the house is mad and they decide to pick up a gun. And so, I think it's going to be that, patrolling more, if we have the resources, because we don't have enough resources to be everywhere.
Right.
And, and we've noticed the crime, and I'm going to ask Chief Crump and his staff if they'll come, if you don't mind.
I welcome them, Mayor.
And, and they can talk a little bit more, because I'm not the experts on, on police. I, I have worked with youngsters and young people in the generation of today that's 35 years old and 40, and some of the mindsets that we're dealing with, but we see a different kind of violence today in that everybody has a gun, and everybody has access to a gun, even the 16-year-olds, and we, we, we just, we try to deal in facts and not in emotion so much, even though we are emotional about it, because when somebody loses his life or her life, then that's, that's, that's one too many. But when you look at the facts, most of these have been related to people who know each other, have had some kind of confrontations over whatever, and they decide to resolve it with a gun, and, and so, or a knife in, in many cases. But this time, I've asked the Police Department, along with my CLO, to let's come up with the names of all these different groups that have been out there holding vigils, those that say they have a real interest, we're going to bring them to the table, and let's see if we can pull together the groups who really have an interest, who are, who are out there on the ground, we want them to be a part of the planning, and then that way they can buy into this. And then, once we plan, we want to walk away from the, the next meeting with a plan to execute, so that we can see how that can help us. And we're asking churches, we're asking the various nonprofits who want to work on violence and crime, we want, we're asking business leaders, and so, we, so we have a list, and they've compiled a list, and people who've been calling me, I'm going to put my, put those names on the list, and ask people to be a part of the, the solution, and, and instead of just talking about it, let's see what can we do together to, to really, really change the dynamics here.
And I, and again, I thank you for that, Mayor. And my, I was being sort of broad and generic in saying that there's, there's not only two shootings and killings, but there's also others.
Crime.
Increasing crime that's going on that are patrolling. But let, let me ask you, well, I asked the chief, but I, I want to just say for, for, for the council members, that we also have responsibility to the safety and well-being of the city.
Yes.
It's not only vested in the mayor, it's vested in council members.
Absolutely, everybody.
So, if there's resources that needs to be applied, you need to make us aware so that we can get this, the, the citizens of Streetport, certainly, they want to see a collective effort from various groups, but at the end of the day, they want to know what the city government is doing.
Absolutely.
To bring safety to the city. So, let me ask you, Chief, Chief, we haven't had a chance to discuss anything, but what's your view on, on the, on the crime and shootings that are happening? And we have concluded, and I guess consensus is that some of it is, is unfortunate in that it's related, related, people relate it, but you, is your, is your view that besides having meetings, that there's nothing that patrolling or policing can do to deter some of this?
Okay, as it relates to crime as a whole, our, our numbers, our percentages are down with the exception of homicide, and even as we speak to what our amount was last year, we have not eclipsed that yet, and one life is one life too many, but even at the expense of having a patrol, a greater number of patrolmen, that still would not alleviate crime. We're going to, we're going to have it, we try to minimize it as much as possible in what we have in our community-oriented policing bureau and our patrolmen and the other specialized units that we have to try to mitigate some of it. We, we do a good job, but can we do better? Yes. Can we have better resources? Yes. But I would also say that as it relates to a lot of our shootings, that they are, are relationship-based, because these individuals that are choosing to use violence in this way to resolve their issues are not strangers to each other. They, they know each other, whether they are, whether they are on opposing sides or from opposing neighborhoods, but, but they're not strangers.
But you're not talking about gang-related, are you?
No, I, I said individuals. I, I'm not referring.
Well, you said opposing sides, I was.
Well, but they, they could be sets, groups, cliques, people that have issues one with another. They are choosing to, to settle their issues this way, and unless they are willing to stop doing what they're doing or even come, they, they can be invited to what we're trying to do, to find out how we can better serve the citizens, but some of their issues are personal, and they have the opportunity to come to the police station, they have opportunity to call our anonymous line, they have an opportunity to make a police report, but they choose not to do that, and even in some of the occurrence, they appear to be waiting until the early hours of the morning to, to carry these things out, as though they are planning to look and see when they might think it's best to do what they're doing, but, but they know the Police Department, they know where it is, they know that we are available to try to assist however we can, but when they make a conscious decision to choose to resolve, attempt to resolve their problems through violence, then an, an increased number of patrol would not be the thing that would completely diminish that.
Okay, you said something, I just want to respond to it, and I, I'm going to move on, but you, you indicated that the, a lot of these shootings are happening before day of mornings. Are you tracking, are you tracking when these incidents are happening?
I mean, according to when the calls come in, we, we know.
Mayor, you, you know.
We know.
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine homicides right now in the city?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. I'm saying, do you, can you, can you show what time of the day or night these have happened?
But we have timeframes, yeah, because when, when the calls come in, whether it's a person showing up at the hospital or whether it's neighbors calling in to tell you the exact time down to the second, no, but we do have timeframes in which these things are occurring.
Can you compile, can you compile that? I just, statistically, I want to see when are these happening? Can you do that for me?
Yes, we, we can give timeframe.
And also, and Mayor indicated that there's another meeting coming up next month. After that meeting, she, she mentioned that a, a plan of action would be developed, and how, how soon after that meeting do you think the plan of action will be developed?
Well, we're hoping, once we meet again with the mayor, to compile our list and find out who all is interested in, in joining with us so that she can reach out to them, her office can reach out to them to see if they will be willing to come. If the meeting is on the 24th of September, if that is secured, those individuals come to that meeting and interact with us, because we will have members from our agency in the various units and divisions there to be able to help and guide alone with, with those groups that want to help us, and once we, once we do that, then we will, we will come up with, with something to do as far as trying to make all those things work so that we can be effective in the community. But to go past the 24th, we don't have a date set beyond that, so once we have that meeting, then I would have to defer to the mayor to find out how we will go forward from there in causing the meeting to be put into action.
And you know, I mean, you and your deputy chief has over 50 years of law enforcement experience, and you do know that a lot of, a lot of what you suggested, that people could come to the station, people could call, a lot of our citizens, especially from the, from the lower indicators of, of our citizens, will not engage the police in a way that you suggested, because they are fearful of retaliation, or they're fearful that they can't be protected if they was to call in and report something. So, I want, it'll be, it'll be very healthy for this discussion and for the plan if we don't include that as a part of the equation of solution, because in our experiences, that's, that's not going to usually happen, so, so trying to suggest that people will, who know something, going to call, that don't usually happen. Now, the community-oriented policing, especially the CLOs and the neighborhood assistant team who's on the ground with some of this activity, they should be able to ascertain and, and, get into some of these areas which some, some of these residents would be fearful of coming out of. But, but I look forward to, to hearing back from, from, from the mayor and from you as it relates to your strategies, okay?
Yes, sir.
And of course, you know.
I refer to us also having an anonymous line.
Sorry?
The whole purpose of being anonymous is, is, is to avoid.
But I'm saying, is it, is it effective? That's what I'm asking you. Is that, is that an effective tool at this point, that you know of? It is?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
The people will use it.
The people will use it.
Because, I mean, nobody knows the identity or the name, and, and so, there is, there should not be a fear involved, but, and if I could piggyback, Chief Crump, I didn't, I didn't mean to, to jump in. I didn't mean to jump in.
Oh, no.
I, I was going to say, the, you know, you said something about people being afraid.
Yes.
Anonymous means that nobody gets to know who, who actually did the reporting. Of course, you know that. Now, unless people are willing to, to even do it from that, using that method, you know, some of these crimes will not decrease. People oftentimes know when something is going on between parties, and I'll go back to what Chief Crump has, has alluded to. Oftentimes, mothers, fathers, extended family members know when there is a feud going on between two parties.
Okay.
And, and one of the latest homicides here lately, one of the, the parents actually knew that that was a problem between her child and somebody else.
Okay.
Okay? They didn't tell us till after, after somebody was killed.
Okay.
Now, how do you prevent that? If the mama or somebody that know about that feud going on, we could get mediation and some kind of help to those parties, but somebody has to tell us that, Mr. Bradford, that, I mean, that's just the bottom line. We don't have enough police officers to be everywhere to take care of this city with, because, you know, we have to do safety for all areas, and we can't just do it for the homicides. You know, we have, we got, we still got people that, that's drunk driving, they killing people too, you know, so we got to, we got to be out there trying to make sure we can stop some of that. We got people that are robbing, we got to have people out there trying to take care of that, and so, we have different areas of crime. I know you know that, and so, the whole Police Department can't go and just, just try to stop people with the homicide, but the community can help us with that, it's everybody's job. And we certainly want and welcome input from the City Council, because you were elected also to help take care of the city, and, and we're going to keep you in the loop on everything we're doing. It's just that we haven't gotten to a point where we can, when we start having the meeting to try to get people from the various groups that want to work with minimizing, and I'll say minimizing, because we're going to always have some of it, particularly some of the homicides and the, the real violent-type crimes, we need people at the table with great ideas, and then people who are willing to help us execute, and that certainly will involve our council members if they want to be involved.
Well, thank you, and we'll, we'll certainly be receptive to whatever we can do, but I also want to be clear on that, and I'm going to look forward to the plan.
Absolutely.
Because I, again, the best way we can solve some problems is to plan, to work our plan.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'm, I'm saying that once we have a roadmap of where we feel, or the administration feel, and the Police Department feel, that we can go to address these things, because again, I, I, I just believe that even though the reality is that some of these things happen and we can't avoid them, but I think if we could put together our strategic plan through research and understanding.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And I don't, and I don't view like some people, I don't view Streetport as I do the national trend. I think Streetport can actually, we can actually do something about what we are dealing with.
Absolutely.
I mean, the reduce, the crime is, is down somewhat, but when we have a crisis, and I consider it somewhat of a crisis, when these many homicides are happening within this frequent time period, that, that's something we should be able, through our collective minds and experience, to put something together that could, that could address this. Before I go to Councilman Corbin, I, I just, we had a conversation on Friday, Chief, up there, and, and I'll talk to you later afternoon, but, but in regards to your policy, you said as it relates to having inmates be, to go to a funeral or to a family hour to visit the funeral home of a deceased mother or grandmother, and you said that, that to your revelation, that was, that had not happened, and, and I found out differently, and I talked to you about that, because that disturbed me, that if we have a situation, and it's understanding under the authority of the chief, that if somebody mama died, that we cannot accommodate them in the way to take them to see, bring closure to that relationship at the funeral home, I just found that to be very disturbing, and, but I, I don't want to get into it, but, but you said that you did not see that as a practice, and I'm saying that, that I have received information otherwise, so.
From someone within our agency?
Yes.
From someone within the Streetport Police Department?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's not what you said when we talked the other day? You said that the funeral home director told you that.
He did also, but I further invested. I told you after I talked to the funeral home director, that he said that, that, that is a practice from most of it.
And then you called somebody within our adminis, administration, and they told you that, that.
Well, I called somebody who.
Within our administration.
Who had, who had knowledge of and had been a member within the police apparatus, who said that that had happened in the past, okay? So.
Did they cite any policy to you?
Well, you said there was no policy.
No, I'm asking, did they cite any?
No, you, no, if there's no policy, then it's at discretion of the chief.
But did the person.
No, if there's no policy, you can't violate something that's not, that's not in writing.
Okay, and I expressed to you why I didn't feel comfortable doing it?
Well, you said because there was no policy. What, what did you tell me? You said there's no policy, so I don't feel comfortable doing it.
There's no policy that governed it, and I didn't feel comfortable.
Yeah, but I said, if there's not, if there's not a policy.
That's what I said to you.
Okay.
I said I did not feel comfortable making that decision, and I, and I stand by that.
That's fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fortunately, the, the area of town that I represent does not have an abundance of homicides, but I think that any violent crime in the city affects all the city somewhat. I think our, our community-oriented policing folks are doing a great job, and, you know, I don't know a way to say this without it sounding a bit harsh, I think we can have all the meetings that we want to, and maybe that makes some of the folks in the neighborhood feel better, and maybe that gives some community activists a new platform to speak on, but I don't think we're reaching the problem necessarily by doing that, because I don't think somebody who has so little value for another human life, that they will go take another, another's life without much thought, are going to come to a meeting and have free cokins and snacks. While that is a useful piece for some of what we're trying to do and, and try to build trust between the citizens and those who are out working the streets every day, I think the Police Department is going to know what to do and how, how to continue with this and try to get to the bottom of it. But, but it really does come down to, somebody talks to somebody, and somebody knows who's mad at who, who's got a deal that's gone bad, and until people are willing to speak up, that's really what's going to turn a lot of this around. That's, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other councilman?
I'd like to remind everybody that we are having a public safety meeting tomorrow on Thursday.
Public safety meeting tomorrow, Wednesday.
Councilman Bowman, Chairman Bowman.
Yes, Councilman. Not directly related, but I would ask, I know there's a, there's a new NAT that is serving some of the neighborhoods in my area, and I found out because, you know, she was reaching out to some of the neighborhood associations on Facebook, but I've not heard from her yet, and so, if, if y'all could just ask her to touch base with me, that would be helpful, I could probably help her connect with some of those groups as well. So, I realize there, you know, there's a lot to pick up on in, in a time when there's a lot of people that need it, so I understand the oversight, but I'd love to. So I understand the oversight, but I'd love to visit if y'all could get a chance to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other councilmembers have any communication? If not, Madam Mayor?
I just have two announcements. One is, I'll be seeing more tomorrow. We'd like to make sure that we keep South Louisiana, the Baton Rouge area, and that entire area, in our thoughts and prayers. And I've been hearing from some of my friends down there, because I spent eight years total from New Orleans back to Baton Rouge, and those people are undergoing some really, really, really tough times right now. Some of them have lost everything. And, you know, if you know people who are trying to send supplies and items down there, please tell them that, you know, if they'll contact some of the agencies here in Shreveport that are doing that, we'll be glad to do that. And we've deployed people from Shreveport Fire Department and Shreveport Police Department down to help in the rescue efforts. And so, you know, we'll talk a little bit more about it tomorrow. But I just want the city council members to know that we've been doing that, and I think you probably have seen some things come across email.
Yes, we have, sure.
And my last comment is, Mr. Chairman and councilmembers, if we could even, if you know other public officials in our city that have an interest in helping us with, you know, the violent issue, instead of putting stuff on Facebook to bash the police officers, it would help us to be able to solve the problem.
Right.
Okay? Because, you know, we have some of that going on, and, you know, I get to hear about all of that. But I think it would help us if we come together as public officials, and it's nobody on the city council. So that takes that out of the loop. But, you know, when you have others that are just criticizing the police department and what they're doing, instead of, you know, trying to pull together and come up with some ways and strategies to help us minimize, if you know people like that, just ask them to contact us and offer us some ideas. Instead of going on Facebook, doing, you know, things like that, I think it does not help our community any at all.
I mean, I am shocked.
Really? I was too.
I mean, is there some suggestion of, like, what they would offer as a different solution? Is it just criticism, I guess?
Yes, sir.
They don't have any solutions.
Well, I mean...
I mean, what people put on Facebook don't really bother me a lot. I mean, because what we do, we ought to be able to defend it. We ought to be able to defend the actions of our police officers, our fire department, our, all the departments and agencies within our previous. If we do it, if it's criticism, criticism is going to come. Criticism come all the time. And what I'm saying, but if it's something that regards public policy, if it's something that is done, that we are doing because that's the way we have put into our policy and procedure, then we should be able to defend regardless of the criticism.
I object to the idea that a public official in our community...
I don't know nothing about that.
Okay? Is using a media outlet like Facebook to criticize another government... I mean, I'll just tell you that now, I mean, I don't need whatever public...
I'm not aware of what you all are talking about. Somebody called me and said that somebody put something, I'm not a friend of this guy's, and I don't know what he put on there. But I agree that within the confines of government protocol and respect...
Irresponsible.
We should be able to reach out to each other if there's an issue with another body that represent with the same areas and constituencies that we represent. There should be a line of communication before we blast each other publicly and get that information. Again, but we should be able to defend why we do what we do.
I don't think that's...
All righty.
Thank you, sir. Those were the two announcements.
Thank you, ma'am. Sometimes I just have to talk about it. Okay, all right. We're down to reports. Just standard report, Mr. Green. Anybody have any questions or remarks or inquiries for Mr. Green? Well, I do. Mr. Green, I just wanted to, you are aware that I forwarded to the clerk and I asked him to forward it to the appropriate departments, some issues regarding properties within my district. Did you get those?
Yes, sir.
And I noted that those properties in the substandard care premise, the dilapidation was there as I sent them to you when I was elected to this council one year and eight months ago. And I see nothing unchanged in those properties that I submitted. Can you explain why that's like that?
Some of those properties have been cut as of today, since you've sent them.
Well, not only cutting. The cutting is the minimum part. I'm talking about the burnt properties, the properties that are...
The burnt properties have been addressed. Like I said, when you send a list like that, you just have a block and a picture. So I'm trying to gather all of the information. I can individually address those by the address. I can't just give you what's the status on the block and whatnot.
Okay, maybe I'm not making myself clear. A year and a half ago, a year and eight months ago...
Take it.
A year and eight months ago...
Okay.
I assumed a council district that had, I would say, the most, the most property standard issues. And some of these properties was, I felt, was in dire need of addressing.
Okay.
And eight months, one year and eight months later, they're still standing, they're still there, and they have not been addressed. And I'm wondering, you have, forget about the fact that I sent you that list and I gave you the blocks that they are in, but you have a crew, what's the name of your crew that goes out every day?
The grass crew?
Inspectors.
The grass crew?
You have inspectors.
Right.
Inspectors who go out every day...
Right.
And to what? To cite these type of violations. And it just seems to me that these type of violations should have been cited and should have been addressed after a year and eight months.
A lot of those properties have been cited. You took pictures with the papers on the wall.
Yes.
But I can't specifically tell you right now, is what I'm telling you. I can go back and get the information. It's not that they haven't, a lot of them haven't been cited. I'm not saying all of them have. But with the new administration, we've made a lot of changes. We've picked up on, right now, grass. Demolition has caught the back end of it, but we're trying to solve issues as we go. We do have plans to help out with the demolitions and to speed up the process. A lot of them we've discussed in the meetings that we had. So we're going to implement some things that's going to...
Let me take that hit, because I'm your mayor.
Sure.
And he's my employee.
Yes.
A year and eight months ago, he was not the director. We had a different one. But I'd like to get a list of those that have not been addressed. Because what we've done, along with you and six other councilmembers, we've been trying to address those. We've made some significant changes. We've had two different people in charge of this department. And I don't give excuses, I try to get results. But we've addressed a lot of your properties, and not just properties. We've addressed a lot of things that you've sent to us, that you've sent to us weekly. I'd like to see which ones you still have concerns about, and let me get with my staff and see what we can do.
I do that, Mayor, and thank you. And what I want to know...
I refer you fuss at me and fuss at him, okay?
I'm not fussing, man!
Yes, you are. I don't like for people to fuss at my employees. Fuss at me because it stops on my desk.
If I'm fussing, I apologize if I sound like I'm fussing. But what I was trying to convey, Mayor, is that after a year and eight months, that some things, some of these properties should have been torn down.
Many of these properties, and many of your concerns have seen, have been addressed.
Okay.
But I will make sure, if I know which ones you still have concerns about, so, because let me find out exactly what happened with each of the ones that you still have concerns about. I want to, I'm doing everything we possibly can. I've got a staff that's working hard. They're not ignoring anything. Let me know which ones you still have concerns about.
We'll do that. And my response to your inquiry about that is that if there's a need for some more resources to help expedite some of this stuff...
Mm-hmm.
Please submit it to the council.
Yes, sir. We will do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me know what you still have concerns about. You know, I'm working with everybody.
Another thing that may help this type of thing, and I don't know, I haven't tried it recently, but I know for a while, the system where you can look up all the citations wasn't, at least it was having troubles on my computer. I don't know if that was just, you know, when you update to a new version of Windows or something, maybe it wasn't compatible with whatever the online thing, the online server was. But there was, at one point, like a form on the property standards website where you could just click, I could click District B, and I could say, "In the last two years", you know, "Can you pull up the citations?", and it would pull up a whole list of all the citations. That way, I could see, even though, you know, they may not have torn something down, I could see it was cited, it already went through the process, we're just waiting on asbestos removal or something. You know, I mean, it sort of had a status of it, like, and that kind of thing might be helpful if that's still operating. I don't know.
And I'm not sure...
Like I say, I haven't pulled it up in a while, but that might help the situation.
Let us find out. We've made some changes, and we've had a lot of problems with our different systems.
Technology.
If we had about $2 billion, we could fix everything.
$2 billion?
Couldn't do it over, yeah. We just need about $2 billion. Because, I mean, we have come into a situation 18, 19 months ago, where, you know, the aging infrastructure, and that includes the blight, and that includes the cleanliness of the city, that includes, you know, the consent decree, all of these issues were ongoing. And, you know, when you neglect this stuff for 50 years, you're not going to solve them in 18 months.
That's true.
But we are working hard. Trust me, we're not sitting on our hands, we're trying to execute. And it's going to take us, you know, more than 18 months to get there. But we really are trying. We're just trying to put out a lot of things all at one time. And we just don't have the money. If we had the money, we could hire a whole bunch of folk from everywhere. We just don't have the money. But we utilizing the funding, we have tried to streamline and be more efficient and effective with the funding and not waste any. We cut 4.2 million from the budget to try to redirect those funds to do a lot of things that everybody wants done. But we just don't, still don't have enough money. I'm still looking for money to give raises. Everybody's upset about that. So, you know, work with us and tell us, you know, we're trying to prioritize. Just know that these folks are working hard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay?
And we all here recognize the challenges that we assumed, and we're going to continue to work with you to really try to relate them as best we can. But if it's a money issue, then tell us it's a money issue, so we'll know which way we should go.
Two billion dollars.
We can go play the lottery or something, other than that, you know?
I'm just telling you, it will take that much to really to address everything that people...
We understand the neglecting...
I'm being honest about it now.
Priority was misplaced along the way, but we...
Absolutely.
We're getting on the right track, but I just think there's certain issues that we need to be able to deal with and look for... Okay, all right. Any other councilmembers? No public hearing tomorrow? I trust, Mr. Crawford?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so let's move forward.
We don't have any items to add to the agenda that the administration is aware of?
I'm sorry?
We don't have any items to add to the agenda that we're aware of?
I'm not aware of any. Okay, good. I have no public comments in regards to items on the agenda, requests. So we are down to confirmations.
Confirmations tomorrow. You'll have Assistant City Attorney Karen Strand for your consideration for confirmation of the...
Now, every council, we had a chance to visit with Strand and a couple, I mean, at the last, what's her name? Any other information or inquiries we need from her? Okay, Mayor, she's not required to come back if you don't...
I think you all talked about...
I understand that she'll be here tomorrow with some special guests that she would like to introduce.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay. You know, you all told us not to bring them back every time.
Yeah, and it's not necessary. Once we visit with them, you know, yeah. We like to visit with them at some time before the confirmation.
Yes, sir. And y'all did the last meeting.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, so we welcome her guest as she is up for confirmation. Okay, Mr. Crawford?
We're under consent agenda legislation. There are no legislation to introduce routine ordinances, but there are to adopt ordinances and resolutions under this. Resolution 156 authorizes Donna Yvonne Dupont, located at 1535 Wells Island Road, to connect to the water and sewer system to the city of Shreveport. And Resolution 157 suspends certain provisions, Chapter 10, Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at walk-ons.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding these resolutions? 156...
I got one quick question. The Wells Island Road hookup, is that an eight-inch line that the parish put in?
No, sir. There's an error on the map. There's no eight-inch line there. There's no city water main on Wells Island Road. This is just for her permission to connect, and if she was to connect, she would have to run her service either down the parish road or through private property to city main.
Didn't we have somebody else in this area like a year or year and a half ago that...
Yeah, this is a pretty long story. There was a business on Wells Island Road that had a service connection, and they were selling water to everybody down Wells Island Road. There were some, once we found out about it, there was an illegal arrangement, and there were some health concerns. So what happened? The parish placed a backflow preventer and a meter at the connection, which is a pretty good distance away. And there is a single service to one residence that was left after the whole ordeal. Everybody else is on that one.
Okay.
So we've been in communication with this person. We keep trying to call and work it out with them, and we get the message that their answering machine hasn't been set up. But I kind of get the feeling that it's not going to work out for them.
You get the feeling what?
That they're not going to be interested in connecting.
They're probably not going to get through it.
Okay, okay.
We're having trouble...
Cost prohibitive to them. Okay. I will just say this for Oliver Jenkins' sake, so, you know, we've been fairly regimented about this in southeast Shreveport, which I recognize is not my district. But I don't know why we would want to go forward with this under this contingency that potentially it might be cost prohibitive or not for them. But that's my input. It is on our consent agenda at the moment.
I can remove it.
I would like it removed, just because you can see where I'm going to go with this deal. And I don't know anything about the situation other than what you've just told me, but I don't think this is a great idea.
I would certainly be more comfortable if they put in their service line or made that commitment. Well, actually, I'd like to see it put in, and then come and ask to connect. I think that's what we've asked other people to do.
Yeah, and the administration's amenable to tabling legislation until that occurs. So if we want to do that tomorrow, we're perfectly...
Do we know if there's been any discussion with the parish about their...
I don't have a preference.
...coffee sharing program for the folks out there? As long as nobody else's wells are undried, then they're happy right now, probably.
The only conversation we've had with the parish is about them running their service along their road right of way. And it's not a practice that people really like to do, but with this unique situation, they're open to allowing that.
Yeah, certainly in Broadmoor, for every line that runs under some other guy's property that was done 50 years ago, I don't need to tell y'all what a nightmare that is, so I don't know why we would embark on that process.
We don't have a preference.
We don't, we can table it.
We don't have a preference. I guess somebody asked us if we could do it.
Could do it.
But it's up to the city council.
And I think, I mean, that's why I like the collective debate, because we can ascertain a lot from that. And I agree with the councilman that it appears that this would be put in the court before the horse. Is that your view? What do you think?
Well, a lot of time, people want to know that they have permission before they spend the money to run the pipes.
But, I mean, but this is a practice that we usually accommodate people on, you know, I mean, we are willing to assist, but we don't want to assume that they're going to do what they are committed to do. So, I think the council members will be prepared tomorrow to do what we feel is best for us at this time. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Crawford?
Resolutions on second reading and final passage or which require only one reading. Resolution 154, employing professionals with respect to the issuance of the city of Shreveport of not exceeding $25 million of refunding bonds for the purposes of refunding the city obligations under the loan agreement relative to an issue of LCDA revenue refunding bonds city of Shreveport Independence Bowl Stadium Series 2008 and II not exceeding $120 million of water and sewer bonds for the purposes of paying for the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements for the combined drinking, water, and wastewater collections, treatment, and disposal systems of the city, including equipment and fixtures of said city with, therewith, and paying a termination fee related to an interest rate swap that was entered into in the city, by the city in connection with a certain LCDA revenue bond Shreveport Utilities Systems Project Series 2005. Resolution 158 amends the city council rules of procedures and otherwise with providing respect thereto, and Resolution 159 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with the management agreement, management agreement between the city of Shreveport and Metro Management Associates Incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion regarding these resolutions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
159, I think we need to postpone, it should be a two-reader, so we'll ask you tomorrow to postpone it until the next.
Does it need to be postponed, or just moved to a different section of the agenda?
I think it would be just, whatever you'd like to do.
We'll make it legal. Move it to another section of the agenda, I mean, it still needs to be read again, so.
Yeah.
But I guess if we postpone it.
First reading.
Yeah, we can just move it to a separate section. I'm just wondering if, if we postpone it, does that still count as a first reading, and the next time we would be able to vote on it?
Well, it would be, the fact sheet needs to be changed to a two-reader to reflect that it's going to be a two-reader.
Okay.
I want it to show the two different, so that's why it's being recommended to be postponed.
Okay.
So that the fact sheet can be altered.
It's not time-sensitive.
Oh, the fact sheet is.
It's not time-sensitive.
All right.
Well, it is, but it'll be done in time for the time deadline that we have, if it's done, introduced to the next meeting, and ultimately passed at the second meeting in September.
But you understood, the councilman was asking that if we postponed it to introduction, would that, would that solve that issue?
I don't think it reflects accurately in the fact, on the fact sheet.
All right, thank you, sir. Number 158, I've got some concern about that, Councilman Bowman, you sponsored that.
Yes, sir.
You, can you explain your rationale?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead. Well, I mean, I'm not understanding what part of it, I thought it was kind of clear.
Well, it concerns me because what this does, it does two things, actually. It reduces the power of the tier, and it also disenfranchises a city councilperson. Issues regarding, issues regarding discipline of councilpeople has been very, and not only this body, but on most public bodies, have been very carefully weighed, because elections solve problems. This council works as a unit, and all aspects of the council works as a unit, and it was, that preview was given to the councilmen and women by their constituents. The only privilege that any councilman have other than any other councilperson is to privilege the service chair. That privilege is vested in the councilmembers. Councilmember's elected chair withholding any position or any appointment based on something that this council, council feels that will serve as disciplinary action, I think is totally beyond our scope and preview. Because it is vague, it's vague, and it says, if a, if a, if a councilperson is out of 50% of the, of the total meetings, administrative conference or regular meetings, they are ineligible to serve on a committee unless their appointment is approved by a majority vote of the council. It doesn't, it doesn't say within what timeline, what timeframe this would happen, it doesn't.
I'm only on two boards.
It doesn't say what if there was something within, within, beyond somebody's control, if I had a stroke and had to be out of the council chambers for any length of time, do that, do that, do I get penalized because I'm not here and dismissed or denied the opportunity to serve in a capacity that my constituents sent me here to do?
The constituents hadn't put anybody on a, on a special committee, I didn't think, I thought the chair did that.
No.
So if the chair did that, number one, it's not, it's not taking away your, anyone's power of doing anything as far as a chair, you can appoint who you like, but this clearly states that if someone misses 50% of the total meetings or administrative conferences, you can still appoint who you like.
And let me, can I, can I say something?
Yeah, sure, say something.
Okay, and I'm not saying whether I'm for or against it, but I think part of the argument would be that if somebody's not showing up, and I was the chair of a council, I'd rather have another person in that place to provide input, et cetera, et cetera, right, because there's only two or three slots, right, for each one of these positions in these committees. I'm not speaking out of hand for you, but if I was the chair of a particular committee and I had two other people, and if I only had one of the two people there with any kind of experience or background or been monitoring the events, it might be additive to have another person that could be helpful, rather than keeping that position occupied by somebody that wasn't there. That's what I would say, and I don't want to take.
No, you're, you're right on it, I agree, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Well, again, and.
We have a chairman, if our chairman wasn't here for 50% of the meetings, we have an ineffective chairman, so that's how I see it on committees.
Well, again, we're talking about, to my knowledge, I don't know of any chairpersons of committees that have not been at their meeting to conduct their meetings. I can't, I can't recall any, any chairperson. Maybe once or twice somebody would call me and say, I'm going to be late, I'm going to be there, can you chair the meeting? And the chair is always available to chair a meeting, but I can't remember chairpeople missing meetings that they assign as chair, but your resolution says that they cannot serve on a committee at any capacity, and because of their missing meetings. Again, I think, I think as it relates to disciplinary action by the councilmembers, even, even if it's, even if it was a misdemeanor or felony, there's no, there's no provisions that we as a councilperson could, could do anything to that person until that person has had due process. And when we start wavering into, into disciplinary action for councilmembers, I just think that's.
It's not disciplinary, this is just, this is from today on forward, this goes for me too, that's not.
No, no, but I'm saying, but it's a disciplinary action, it's a disciplinary action, and we're going to penalize a councilperson because they, they.
Because they're ineffectively coming to meetings? I mean, I'm not understanding.
No, no, that's, again, the issue of the constituents of that district, if I'm not performing as a councilperson.
I'm saying, as far as public safety, I mean, maybe on two different pages, I'm talking about public safety, property standards, or those committees, I'm not talking about chair, as in the chairmanship, I'm talking about committees.
But I'm saying that we act as a collective body, we, we are a unit, we are a unit that are, within a democracy that are.
We're a unit that's not having seven.
No, no, even though, even though it's a committee, a meeting, the committee actions have to be adopted and approved by the council anyway, so whatever is discussed in the committee meeting comes to this body for final approval, so if somebody is not participating in that meeting, it does not take anything away from the meeting, because those who are in attendance could discuss, inform whatever the discussion needs to be, but it's going to come back to this body, and it's this body's privilege to make the decision on whatever happened in a committee, there's no vested power in being on a committee.
So why are we debating?
I'm saying because we, I do not want to disenfranchise anybody who has been elected by their constituents to represent them in a body, if they are not representing them, then that goes back to that district voting people.
If they are elected to represent that district, that's one thing, but if they're not effectively or present at the meetings or whatever, then to me, that's showing ineffective ability to even to, 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 to chair a committee, to, to, to be, you know, to chair a committee, I don't see it, I just, I don't.
All right, well, I understand what you're all saying, but I, as a, as a councilmember and who see that we are a collective body, who represent our various districts, who.
It has nothing to do with them representing the district.
You're arguing two different things, that's what I'm saying.
But to have appointments on a committee as we, as we share those duties, as we share those duties afforded all councilpeople, they're afforded all councilpeople at the preview of the chair, taking that power from the chair and then disenfranchising a councilperson, I don't think fits within the structure of what we ought to be doing, that's, there's a lot of legislation that we need to be offering to improve this city, but the discipline of councilmember is not one of them.
I agree, that goes too right, I mean, even when you just stated about the same as far as in your district about the houses and when they were not being there for a year and eight months.
Yeah.
Then in another sense, you want them to come out and do something totally different in your district, well, your people shouldn't be held accountable for X, Y, Z because they're impoverished or because their social, their economic status or whatever, I mean, it's still two, it's two sides, going two different ways on that.
If they feel like I'm not representing their district, then they should recall me, you shouldn't recall me, you shouldn't punish me, it's not your job to punish me.
You're taking this, I think you're misunderstanding, this is only for a committee. Not, they can, if their chairman, if you want to appoint them or what and whatnot, that's fine, hopefully they attend 50% of the meetings that we have here to be effective.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I mean, councilman's supposed to be helping me out here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It went static.
It went static, all right, Councilman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is very clear to me, and the only thing I might add is that we add a sentence in there about per, given calendar year.
And that's when, that's when they're appointed, once a year.
That's the way, that's the way committee assignments go, and maybe that would just make it a little, a little clearer if we added that in there, but I'm, I'm going to say that I think the council has every right and has the expectation to amend council rules as necessary, I mean, there are other governmental, there are other elected bodies in this city that have gone as far as to stop pay for members who miss a certain amount of meetings, and, you know, I think the voters, it's easy to say, well, they could recall somebody, recall will never happen in Louisiana, it's just, it's, it's tough, and, and it's not that somebody's not possibly effective and, you know, they, their folks have to wait another three, four years, however long somebody's term still lasts, but we work, we send a lot of work through committees, and that's, that's our workhorse, and then it comes here and we do discuss it again, but for a councilmember to be prepared and be ready to discuss and ready to vote, I think this is some logical legislation, I would just make that addition of calendar year.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the chief legal counsel for the Shreveport City Council to come forward, please. Good afternoon, Mr. Brown.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Have you had a chance to look at this 158?
I did, yes, sir.
And do you feel that, have any comments either way on it?
As I relayed earlier, that the council does have the prerogative to amend, change, alter, modify its rules as it sees fit, I'm not a policymaker, it's a decision of the council, this body, to determine whether or not that rule is appropriate, does not violate any ordinances that I was able to review or any statutes that I see, and it does comply with the open meetings law as well.
And you don't think the court would deem it unconstitutional?
To amend the rule, no, sir, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, well, again, I just feel that when you're elected to a public office, and it's just a precedent, if, if, we were talking about an excessive group of councilpeople, but I think we're talking about one councilperson, and I don't think this applied to be generic enough to rise to the standard of taking away a privilege that was given to them through the election process. Okay, let's see where we are, Mr.
Introduction of resolutions, Mr. Chair, not to be adopted prior to September 13th, 2016. Resolution 160 authorizes the use of certain city-owned equipment by the Junior League of Shreveport Bossier, this has about a $1,500 value, if you'll notice that we've added those under the mayor's direction on how much those costs will be for those donations in the future. Resolution 161 acknowledges that the city council has reviewed the 2016 internal municipal water pollution prevention report concerning the North Regional and Lucas wastewater plants, and the resolution 162 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Grambling State University relative to the Red River Classic Football Game.
Okay, good, any comments, questions regarding these resolutions? And thank you for giving us at least a figure on what you thought the value of that.
Absolutely.
Use was. In regards to the Grambling game, I'm happy that that contract has finally been agreed upon, and the provisions in it meets both of ours, we good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good, good.
Any other questions regarding these, okay, thank you, sir, may continue.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to September 13th, 2016. Ordinance 81 amends and supplementing Resolution Number 131 of 1984, the General Bond Resolution adopted on June 12th, 1984 is amended, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $20 million in principal amounts of taxable water and sewer revenue bonds, LDEQ Sewer Project Series 2016A of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana pursuant to the General Bond Resolution, is provided in a notice of intent given by Resolution Number 137 of 216, adopted on July 12th, 2016, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to be the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund, pledging the net revenues of the combined water and sewer systems to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds, approving a loan agreement in connection with such bonds and providing with other matters. Ordinance 82 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget and otherwise providing with respect thereto, this is a companion to ordinance 83 for Spore Trans accepting of the $4 million grant that will provide the new electric buses, 83 is the, amends the 2016 budget funding contractual services portion provided by Spore Trans by Metro Management Associates Incorporated. Ordinance 84 amends certain sections of Chapter 66 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the employees' retirement system. Ordinance 85 is a zoning ordinance, case number C-62-16, amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the north side of Mount Zion approximately 200 feet east of Kingston Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, being the same as hereby changed from B1 Buffer Business District to B2 Neighborhood Business District to R1D PUD Urban One Family Residential Plan Unit Development District with preliminary site plan approval. Ordinance 86 zoning, case number C-63-16, amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located in Suite 110 within Piermont Office Park on the north side of Piermont Road east of Atlanta, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, being the same as hereby changed from B1 SPI-6 Buffer Business Design Overlay District to B2 SPI-6 Neighborhood Business Design Overlay District with site plan approval. And then ordinance number 87 is zoning also, case number C-68-16, amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located south of Burke Coons approximately 320 feet west of Linwood, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from B3 Community Business District to B3E Community Business Extended Use District limited to car rental and auto body repair shop only with site plan approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding these ordinances?
I got a bunch.
Please.
Okay, start with 82, 83, the grant, we already accept. The grant, we already accepted this $4 million discretionary grant?
We have been notified. We did write for the grant. I wrote to senators and asked them to, congressmen at the congressional level, and asked them to support us because we need buses. And on this particular one, and I can have Alan to come up, Alan Bright is here for the narrow Metro Management, but it specifies that it has to be for electric buses. And so I'm not turning down any resources. I made a commitment to bring resources to Shreveport that we needed, and we need buses.
I'm not being critical, I'm just asking, do we already have the 3.9?
No, we don't have the money yet.
In the deal before we make this amendment to our site plan for the electric part of the equation?
We don't have the money yet, but go ahead, Alan.
The 3.9 million has been a portion to the City of Shreveport in the federal register. We have to formally apply for the grant through FTA's grant making system, but that money has been designated for Shreveport. It's just a matter of us. We've put out public notice through NLCOG for our transportation improvement plan to add the project to there, and then as soon as that's adopted, following the public comment period, we'll be able to apply with FTA and we'll be awarded the grant. So it's a certainty.
The answer to it is we don't have the money yet.
We don't have the money yet, but we have...
We don't have the check yet.
But it's waiting on us.
It is waiting on us to go through our process.
$25 million in grants awarded nationally to 20 different transit systems. Our $3.9 million grant was tied for the largest grant with three other cities.
And we were awfully lucky, by the way.
Absolutely, that's fantastic.
To get that.
I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to get some information. I was like, when did we find out that we got $3.49 million grant?
Last one.
Okay.
Before you go to the next one, I'm going to ask you a question regarding the electric buses.
No, I'm still on this one, but I'll go back to you. Okay, so when we have our new fleet mix, or you will have the new mix, tell me how many electric buses and how many CNG buses and how many legacy diesel buses?
So we have 44 buses currently. 19 of those are compressed natural gas, the remainder are diesel. It'll take about a year from now before we can get the electric buses delivered, so those will replace some of the legacy diesel buses. We also have some smaller airport shuttle cutaway style vehicles that are being delivered this week and next week that are actually unleaded fuel, and we're going to be using those on fixed routes in place of some of our bigger diesel buses.
Gotcha.
The diesel portion of our fleet is getting significantly smaller.
Smaller. I got you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Looks like this sets a high standard for the next Congress.
It does.
Whoever that may be wants to be informed on these matters, and you know, if there's checks being written, want to know.
Well, I mean, actually, I was going to make the announcement tomorrow. In fact, I think Africa already has it down. We were trying to wait until we could get the legislation written and get approval because we don't have the money yet. It has, it's been earmarked for us, but until we go through all of this, then we don't get the funding to actually buy the buses. But I am going to be announcing that tomorrow. We'd like to announce when we get money.
Certainly, ma'am.
Try to let you know.
And I'm really...
And since you plan to be a congressman, we'll be writing you to help us get some of this money.
I will absolutely give you my address.
And I commend you for your efforts in pursuing these kinds of opportunities.
Absolutely.
But I wanted to ask you real quickly, and once it assumes whatever, the grant to get the buses, there are buses, what's the warranty would be on these buses?
Buses have a 12-year warranty. There's a 12-year warranty on the battery system as well, which is kind of the most high-risk portion of an electric bus. So a typical battery warranty would be six years, but the manufacturers put a 12-year warranty into the price of the buses that we'll be paying with this federal grant.
So that's in repair, maintenance, whatever, besides the battery cost?
Correct. Full replacement of the batteries.
What's the passenger capacity?
It's the same, these are 35-foot buses that are the same as our compressed natural gas buses. The seating capacity is 40, but you can get about 60 people with standing room on these buses.
So, I mean, it'd be 12 years for the city would be liable for any repair after that.
So there'll be other maintenance, other components of the bus that aren't covered under that 12-year warranty?
Like tires and several maintenance.
Exactly, general maintenance, but the large component systems.
But I mean, the expensive stuff?
Yes, sir.
And the price of them?
With things like our Motorola radio, Fairbox, bike rack that we need to add to it, they're going to be about $700,000 each, which compares to about $450,000 for a compressed natural bus, compressed natural gas bus. So significantly more, but the fuel cost, the cost of charging compared to the cost of fueling a diesel bus, it's about 25% of that cost. So a lot lower cost of ownership than a diesel or a CNG bus.
But as relates to mileage, it's pretty well, pretty good, I mean, 500,000?
Yes, so 500,000 miles, 12 years is the standard life of a bus, and that applies to these buses as well.
Good, very good. Okay, thank you, thank you, councilman. Thank you, you're back.
What does this do to the funding of, I'm ordinance 84, excuse me. Have, we had the actuaries already run the numbers on this?
Yep.
Tell us what it does to...
Well, we have not had the actuaries run on suspending the previous ordinance. We're looking at it strictly from a finance standpoint in that we do not have the finances to provide the additional amounts that's going to be needed in 2016, which is, or 17, which is 1.4 million. We don't have the finances to provide the amount of the increase in 2018. So remember, the actuaries gave you a picture, okay? They don't calculate in our revenue. That's something that the mayor's office has to do to calculate those things in. We're faced with a lot of challenges this upcoming year. You know, healthcare is one of those challenges. We're having to pass some of that increase along to our employees that we haven't done in a few years because it's so substantial. And so the challenge for us is where do we come up with that another 1.4 million dollars when tax revenues are headed in the other direction? The, in the accounting philosophy, if you look at the 2015 audit, which I have privilege to, which is not out yet, we've got $183 million in assets in ERS, okay? Total pension liability is 400 million, but that is, that's for every payout for every employee. So we have enough to make our pension payments for years to come, okay? They don't allow us to add up all of our intake for employee and city contributions for that same time period where they offset us with that 400 million. I think it's unfair, but those are the accounting rules as they are. But we do have enough money in there. All we're asking for is a breather to be able to allow us to put this budget together without having to cut city services somewhere else to come up with that 1.4 million dollars or pass that cost along to our employees. It's simply not there. And that's something that, you know, whether or not it was taken into consideration when the ordinance was passed in 2048, I think the previous council had the best of intentions, which included you, to say if that funding was available, certainly, we want to further stabilize our retirement accounts for our classified employees. But the fact is, it's not there.
I mean, that's not truly a fact, but I'm happy to grant you that the priorities are elsewhere. I mean, clearly, and we can't say it doesn't exist. Now, I'm not debating whether the priority is there or not, but I mean, let's have a little object, we clearly have 1.4 million. And, you know, my concern is, whether you know this or not, I was very involved with this reform to the ERS because the goal was to get us back to, you know, some way to take on, I mean, if you say 183 million and we got 400 and some on, I mean, then we're funded below 50%.
Correct.
I mean, that is a...
That's funding below 50% if every single employee retired today.
That's how we're required to...
I understand that.
And that affects our debt ratio. I mean, it affects, it's not in isolation because it affects our bond rating, it affects a lot of other issues while we're going out for several bonding issues at the same time. Now, they may argue, and I don't speak for bond counsel, that it won't take effect till the following year. I don't know what our ratings, when we get up for ratings next or whatever, and we're, clearly, our ratings would not be adjusted based on an ordinance that's being considered. But anyway, I certainly would like to know, I think right now we're 2030 for us to get back to 80% funding and maybe have the, I mean, it's 2035 that we get 80% fund?
It was 35.
35?
I believe it was 35 with the last one.
Okay. And obviously, the change here is not, now it's 2036 because it has a multiple compounding effect. So I would like to know, and I don't want us to spend a million dollars to get the actuary to do it, but I certainly think we need to know what this, when, by virtue of this proposal, what that does to our actuarial number of 2035. I mean, if that moves it to 2040, I think that's worth, and I'm not, I'm just saying, this is a big issue right here.
Yes, it is.
And I don't debate that it's a big issue on your budgetary side, too. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that either. I'm very cognizant of that. But I think this requires some, you know, significant discussion across multi-departments rather than just in retirement because I don't know what the bond counsel has said, but I certainly think we need to get their perspective on that. Because if it's costing us a couple points on our bond debt, well, then we're losing that money somewhere else in our stream. I don't know all those answers, and maybe I've gone through them, I just need, would like a little more background.
We'll provide you whatever you need. I tell you, this one has been a tremendous challenge for us. I mean, I know that, I know what the intent was when it was put in place in, I guess, 2014 before I came aboard. I think you all did this legislation. And of course, each year, it's going to go up, and we have to add more and more and more to it. Now, with that said, one of the things that we've been trying to do is to address all the other issues that are also priorities. The infrastructure has been delayed and deferred and neglected, and we're trying to do that. We got the consent decree stuff that's going, and of course, we get some monies, but we're having to constantly spend money trying to make sure that people have a clean environment. We have so many issues. And of course, with the revenues not coming in, it just have put us in a real bind here. I mean, I know you know better than I, the gas and oil industry is down, that dominoes into a lot of other companies, and so our revenues for the first quarter were just, what, a million below almost. And so we're just in a bind here, and unless we can raise some additional revenue, we either pay for retirement on employees or cut services to people. And so, I mean, that's where we are. The majority of the budget already is being spent on, as you know, employees. And it seems like we need some more police department, policemen because we need to be everywhere, and we can't do that. You know, what I'm saying, we're just in a bind here. And with this going up every year, another, what, last year was, went up to 1.5 million more?
Went up 1.6 last year, or this year.
This year. And, you know, healthcare went up like 750,000. We didn't pass any of that on to the employees. We're in a bind here, so we just need to have that discussion, and, you know, we're trying not to cut services, and we're trying to address the needs that have not been addressed. I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on. That's where we are.
I'm well aware, and you noticed that I've said that I'm interested in knowing where those figures lie before I make my decision because I'm well aware of the larger ramifications. But I just want to make sure we are considering that, and...
And if I could, Mr. Councilman, I think if we could just have some discretion at the administrative level to where, at the end of the day, as we put our budget together, we're not held to a hard, fast number, which this ordinance holds us to, and giving us some discretion to where when we get through with all the budget numbers and we get through with crunching, if we have that available funding, whether it's in the operating reserve and the mayor decides to put it toward this retirement or the council decides to move it there, maybe we can change the language to more, where it's more palatable for you to get, just give us a little bit more leeway to not having to go to a hard, fast 25% this year. And maybe that's a compromise.
And we are looking for other ways. We've got some contracts and things that are out there that have not been executed to bring in revenues. We're doing some of that on the risk management side of the house, but we got some other issues going on. We're hoping that we can bring in some revenue. But as we are able to bring in revenues to free up, you know, money to be able to do what the legislation, what we inherited because we needed to do it, it's an unfunded mandate, and I know that. But we'll be glad to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman?
Sorry, and now I'm down to 86, and this may be a question, ordinance 86. So now we're changing the zoning because they needed an alcohol issue for this? We had this on the agenda, didn't we have this on the agenda for this particular office a few weeks ago?
I'm not certain I can remember that for certain, but I can tell you the whole reason for this.
It's because they want to be able to...
Well, no, let me explain something to you. The building, when they put in the restaurant originally, they failed to realize that the zoning line crossed the space, and a small portion is outside of the area. And so we're adjusting the zoning line to allow that restaurant to be a full restaurant, and they are asking for alcohol permission through ZBA. It's just a correction.
Okay.
That's all it is.
Because last week or whatever, I think we voted to a change in ZBA on this property so they could sell.
Right.
Change the zoning so they could sell. Okay. I got you. I didn't, but I am surprised Atlanta even exists as a name of road. Because I was like, well, somebody's got a typo in this name. Atlanta doesn't even exist. I mean, I live very, very close to Atlanta. And I was like, what is he talking about? Okay, so you answered my question about the little sliver.
Yes.
Because I was like, well, didn't we just do this last week? But this is a different part of the...
Right, right.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Ms. Winnie, we will be looking forward to our, I mean, this report tomorrow.
Yes, I will have a report for you tomorrow. Yes, sir, I will.
Councilman?
I'm mission complete, sorry.
Hi, Councilman Corbin.
I wish it was drawn.
You covered everything, huh?
I don't want to go through it again.
I mean, I got to the end, right? I didn't have any more beyond that.
Okay. Any other council members have any? And this is introduction, so hopefully we can get more information and... You painted a pretty broom picture there, but we'll get there.
We will, we will. Hang with us.
Mr. Crawford?
Ordinance is on second reading and final passages. The numbers are assigned to ordinance numbers. Ordinance 76 amends the 2016 budget for the grant special revenue fund for the fire department's SCBA air mass. That's the grant portion, and then their companion is ordinance 77 amends the 2016 budget for the general fund for the fire department to appropriate those funds. Ordinance 78 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget for the airports, three projects, and then their companion is ordinance 79 as well, amending the 2016 airport enterprise fund budget. Ordinance number 80 levies a tax of 19 mils per dollar on all properties subject to ad valorem taxation within the City of Shreveport for the year 2016 for the purposes of paying principles and interest on a outstanding general obligation bond of the City of Shreveport.
Okay. These ordinance on final reading, and we're going to prove them tomorrow. These ordinances on final reading, and we're going to approve them tomorrow or reject them. Any questions regarding these ordinances?
I have a question that does not need to be answered at this moment. But 26.5 is what our previous mileage was in 2010? Do you remember, Charles?
The last time we lowered it, we lowered it from 22.5 to 19.
19, but then prior to that, do you remember if it was 26.5?
It was 26-something, I should, it was 26-something, I'm not sure exactly 26.5. I can get that for you tomorrow.
Okay, no, no, I was just curious if somebody knew, but, okay, thank you. That was it.
I got a document I can send you later today that's got those year by year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on these ordinances? Okay, we are completed with our legislative item. There's no table legislation that needs to come up to table, Mr. Crawford or Mr. Clerk?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Now, before I move forward, I want to be clear on the, on the resolution 158. Councilman Corbin offered a addition. Is that going to be accepted?
Well, if he offers an amendment...
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is not ours.
Okay, we're down to appeals. Any property standard appeals today?
Not today.
Not today? Okay.
Chairman, the special exception use will be heard tomorrow.
Okay.
It's scheduled to be heard tomorrow, rather. And the taxi appeal, I've just been informed that Mr. Tucker says that he did not receive our letter, and, but we would ask that you would postpone that, maybe until tomorrow?
Is he here?
He's not here.
Okay, I understood that, but I thought we weren't prepared. Before I go there, in regards to the private standard appeal of 4816, anybody have any comments regarding that? And I have moved that we will, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Tucker, I'm making a motion that we will, we will postpone this appeal till tomorrow. Mr. Tucker's not here, and he didn't receive the notification that he should be here. So, we'll take this up tomorrow. That's my motion.
I second it.
The move by the chair, seconded by Councilman Fleury, that we will postpone Mr. Tucker's appeal until tomorrow after, during the appeal process of the agenda. Any questions? All in favor, please vote. Okay, motion passes.
You're yeah?
You're yeah? Okay, well, he gonna hit his button, so I won't be accused of making a yeah. He said I was a yeah at first. But motion passes, 6 to 0, one absent. You record that, counsel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All righty. We'll see Mr. Tucker tomorrow, and y'all, be prepared to make your recommendation there. All right. Any other appeals? No? Officer Boersen, committee reports. We've heard already that there will be a public safety committee tomorrow at 1:30. 1:30. Those members, those that are, be there, please govern yourself and be there.
Also, just mention, we have a master plan committee meeting on Friday? Friday the 26th. Yeah, if we have...
It's a tough date. It's our, it's the date that falls on, but it happens to be kind of a tough date for some people to make it, so we'll see. It's scheduled, it may not happen.
Okay, well, follow Mr. Sweeney, and hopefully, we can be prepared to bring that UC item before the council, and I'm going to ask that we give it timely enough that council members could address it through their various means. All right. No other committee reports? Clerk?
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Additional communication from the mayor?
None, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other communication from council members? Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick things. I expect there to be a large crowd at the beginning of our meeting tomorrow in relation to a recognition that Mayor Tyler and I will be doing.
Okay.
Should clear out a bit after that, but I do look for there to be a full house right at first. And then, second, Mayor Tyler, will we have a chance to meet or visit with our new financial advisor sometime soon?
We don't have, we don't really have one per se coming up and talking a bit about what we're doing.
We'll kind of tell you how we've been doing this until we get one.
I'll introduce this is Pam Mobley from RSI Group. I'll let her introduce herself and tell you...
Okay, I'm sorry, Counselman, I mean, I didn't get her name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pam?
Pam?
She can introduce herself.
And the last name was?
Mobley, M-O-B-L-E-Y.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Mobley.
That's okay. I'm president and CEO of the RSI Group, and I've been working with the city on the upcoming bond financings that they're working on. And I'm serving...
In the interim capacity, is that my understanding?
Yes, as municipal advisor.
Counselman?
It's good, I just, the first I heard that we had a different financial advisor was when I read the agenda.
I want to surprise this way, way in a lot of areas.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, if I could, please, the city does not have a, an FA of record. It's this administration's desire to utilize those financial experts in any capacity that will create the most benefit for the city. So, when we do go out for bonds, we're not tied to one specific institution. And so, RSI comes very highly recommended, and we believe that they'll give us the greatest benefit for this particular bond issue, but that's not to say that they'll be used in the next bond transaction.
Good to meet you.
Thank you.
See some advantages and disadvantages in that, in that process, but hopefully, you guys, you know, again, I think discretion, and you used that term earlier, I like giving you some leeway in making some decisions that we should not necessarily be involved.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, we do have to make those decisions, though, Chairman. I mean, we do need some information about major changes that happen before it reaches our agenda sometimes. So, I mean, certainly, it is your discretion, but I mean, we do have to, you know, know about it enough to make our votes sometimes, so, I mean...
Okay, so, are you suggesting that when, whenever we doing stuff like this, we just send you an email letting you know what we're doing?
Yeah, just a little communication about what's happening, or, you know, so that things don't take us off guard a little bit, is all.
Okay, we'll be glad to do that.
And again, I'm, I use that term in a way, in a professional sense.
Absolutely.
That we know our limitations as relates to how far, you know, I remember...
And I'm learning. I'm not trying to hide anything because I don't hide stuff from people, so I'm learning. I just know that I don't have a comfortable level with any certain advisor right now. And so, we're trying to choose people based on what we're doing at the time to make sure we can get the best for our benefit. So, please know that we're transparent, we're not trying to hide anything. And I didn't know that that was the process, but now that I do know, I will certainly share. I've always tried to do that with this council.
And again, I think the process in that you would evaluate your entities by their performance and their merits, and if they want continual service, then...
Right, absolutely.
But the counsel is right, we need to, we need to be in the loop as relates to these matters so that we can be intelligent about how we proceed.
Some of us may even have some sensitivities about financial advisors in federal court at the moment, so we are particularly accustomed to.
Okay, all right. Let's have those discussions. I'll be glad to.
Absolutely.
Okay? I'm happy to answer any questions.
We got an understanding, we got an understanding. All right, thank you, ma'am.
I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Not at this time, thank you. Thank you very much. Any additional communication from council members? Let me just thank you, council members, and mayor, and those who participated in our government meeting on two Fridays ago, I guess, Friday. I thought it was a very productive meeting. We got a lot of information that I encouraged and exhorted those bodies to take what applied to them and try to utilize it to the best they can. The special chamber committee met, and we'll be meeting again to get recommendations on how we can upgrade our technology here in the chambers, as well as safety issue that we talked about at the last part of the meeting. So, we'll be meeting again, and we'll be bringing a report back to this body at the proper time. Are there any other items that need to come in for this administrative conference? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.